Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Here.
Pam Howard?
Present.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Here.
Barbara Cruz?
Here.
Dave Levy?
Here.
Mark Sutter?
Here.
Jeff Swante.
And he may join us later. He let me know that he could possibly be late.
Great.
So, okay. The agenda is as follows. I will go ahead and read the three discussion items that we'll be convening in executive session and then entertain a motion for the adoption of this agenda. Or I'll entertain a motion for moving into executive session. So, item 2.1. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the purchase of property interests pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 Section 4A and determining positions relative to matters that are subject to negotiations not involving collective bargaining agreements, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 Section 4Ei. And 2.2. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the superintendent's evaluation pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 Section 4F. And, item 2.3. The purpose of this meeting is to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, to develop strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators concerning an individual employee's contract pursuant to Section 24- I'm sorry, CRS 24-6-402 Section 4E. I guess that's a Roman numeral one. And Roman numeral two, Section B of the CRS of 2017. We will be inviting Skip Armatsky, Dr. Bill Seabers, and Dr. Stan Shear in with us, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to convene into executive session. Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Okay. All right, the board has returned from executive session. No action was taken during executive session. In a minute. All right, I would like to call the regular meeting to order. Wendy, if you would please call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Here.
Pam Howard?
Here.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Here.
Barbara Cruz?
Here.
Dave Levy?
Here.
Mark Sutter?
Here.
Jeff Swante?
Here.
Thank you. And Jeff, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, if you would read the mission statement, please.
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers challenges and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is item 2.1, adoption of the agenda for February 7th as presented. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the agenda here in a second, but I think that, you know, we've got some times listed on here, and they're general times, more for the board's reference. But I have a feeling that 6.4 is, actually 6.2 and 6.4 are going to be a little bit more than 10. So I'm going to go ahead and change those to 20. And if we come in under time, that's great. And if we hit 20 minutes, I'll check back with you guys and see if we want to continue. All right, so with those two changes, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Wendy, if you would call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Thank you. So the agenda is...
Yes, sir.
Just one point of information, please, about the agenda. I had said that I was going to propose a new board policy about creating an audit committee. I submitted a draft to Dr. Shear and Gordon Jones. They both offered very good comments. They want to send it to legal. I spoke to Gordon since then. We're looking at some of the similar policies of other boards. What we would hope to do is to have that incorporated with Dr. Shear's comments by, to me, by the end of February. Then we go to legal, get their comments, and we hope to present everything to the board by the end of March, with the idea the committee will not convene until September. So there's plenty of time, but I wanted to explain that to the board.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. So, minutes. 3.1, approval of minutes from the regular meeting on January 17th, 2018. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented for January 17th. Are there any corrections or changes, additions to the minutes? Hearing done. Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Great, thank you. That brings us to item 4.1, public comment. Pam, if you would read the public comment introduction, or if you have the public comment introduction.
Since the board likes to hear varying viewpoints from all stakeholders in our community, we invite anyone to speak before the board at each of our Wednesday meetings, the first and third Wednesday of every month. Each speaker will receive three minutes, and the lights up there will tell you, green is go, yellow is 30 seconds, red is your three minutes are up. And please take note that it is board policy and protocol that the board does not respond to any public comment. So just don't be surprised if there's no response. Thanks.
All right, and Dr. Banks will manage the clock and call you up a couple at a time?
Yep, so we have two on the list tonight. We have Rick Brown, followed by Jason Hatch.
I wanted to say thank you first for all of your guys' time and being part of the board. You know, it's hard and it's difficult to try to meet the requirements of the entire public community. I'm here to talk to you and ask you guys, to really challenge you to rethink the change in the schedules and the times. I have sent emails to you guys. I've had numerous conversations with teachers, with people in the community, and a lot of people feel like this was not communicated well. It was inefficient. It was put out there as a possibility, nothing official. And so now what you have is you've got a bunch of parents that are upset, as well as impacts that are going to cause some major problems for individuals. There's discussions being had that they will have school activities before school instead of after-school, like sports, things like that. That completely takes away from the whole idea of sleep schedules. That's for the older kids. You start to deal with the younger kids. I'm in a unique situation. I have a beautiful 15-year-old, and I have a beautiful eight-year-old. Two different school districts, or same school district, two different places. Having them in two different locations, now we have to get them up earlier. We have to make her, who's supposed to get more hours of sleep than the teenager, has to get up earlier, and most likely will not go to bed at an earlier time. What you've asked us to do now is I have to put my child to bed around 7:30 in order for them to get the right amount of sleep. I have to ask you, if I'm supposed to be an active parent, how does that help? And I have news for you. A lot of people in the community have the same thing. The current studies that are out there, I've done a lot of research on this. The current studies out there started in 2014, go back to 2008, some of them. But I will tell you that what they're starting to see is the impacts that are happening to the younger children, having to start earlier, is impacting exactly what you're trying to address with the older kids. We do not live in a metropolitan area, so when we do have to get kids to school and have to do with things, it's usually the parents. So now you're causing an impact directly to parents when the average median in this town is $55,000. If you think about work schedules, people can't break away. And they, how are they supposed to let their kids get to school? Walk? I'm sorry, I don't trust that. They can't have school, they don't have school buses because that's been eliminated due to cost reductions, and I get it. But then you need to work with us. And right now, I don't feel like it's been worked with. I feel like it's been one-sided, and I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of parents that have raised the issue to me. So I ask you guys, please take some time, rethink it, rethink how you put the survey out, ask people. Because I think you will start to sense that this is a very detrimental problem. And let's be in front of what's happening, or what's going to happen, with the findings that are starting to come out with the new studies and the school time changes. Thank you.
So, Jason Hatch?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Shear. I spent three years on the Master Plan Committee, and I'm not here for that tonight. I'm here as a parent. I wanted to tell you that over the course of the last year, I've not had the time to participate on the Master Plan Committee because of volunteer experiences that my wife and I have been doing with our local school and work. But that being said, both of us are feeling a little bit tired, tired of making excuses or having to deal with some of the ramifications of the lack of funding that our schools are experiencing. As you're well aware, and I don't think you need more data on this, there is no rock that we haven't overturned over to find an extra $3 million here or there to kind of meet different needs. There's simply no money left. The state is not going to come to our rescue. I think there's a lot of myth that needs to be debunked. I think there's a lot of misinformation in our community that unfortunately is creating a, just a negative impact on the milieu and the psyche of what we need in our school system. I'm here to tell you that I think that you should continue to go after our community and let them know that we need support, and that it's dollar support. It's mills, it's bonds, it's things like that. I think you need to honestly make the case, communicate with the community, and let them know that this is not something that we can continue to kick down the road. Every dollar that we don't spend now to fix something is another $4 in the future. It's not going to get cheaper. It's just not going to happen. We can throw monikers at people like negative factors and $14 million, you know, since 2012. I mean, we can give them all the information that they want, and we can be honest with them. But the louder, more negative, and partisan rhetoric that's going on within our community is overshadowing what you are communicating with the community. As you discussed tonight, another mill, another bond, or something like that, please be honest with yourselves about what the needs are. And be brave. We're talking about a cup of coffee, a month increase in people's taxes. I don't think it's that much. Tired parents like me are going to start leaving in droves, if not already. And then I worry about those kids who don't have the same resources that we have, and what happens to them? Do we become a school district where the impoverished, the less fortunate, and the downtrodden are being put into the schools? And those kids who have the resources, and those families who have the expertise are not with us. So as you discussed that tonight, just know that I support you, and I will continue to be an advocate for these types of endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up are some action items. We have a few proclamations tonight, and I'd like to share them around, if you don't object. Pam, do you? I think, do you want to give? Oh, you got one? Okay. You want to read the bar? Okay, so the first one up is item 5.1, a proclamation declaring February 5th through 9th, 2018, is National School Counseling Week. Who's got that one? School counseling?
I think that's Dave.
Is that you, Dave?
That was Jeff's.
It's Jeff's?
Okay.
Well, you guys fight it out down there, and if one of you would read the proclamation, please.
Resolution. National School Counseling Week, February 5th through 9th, 2018. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Thompson School District Board of Education, hereby supports National School Counseling Week, February 5th through 9th, 2018.
Thank you. And I will entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation declaring February 5th through 9th, National School Counseling Week. Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Are there any school counselors out there this afternoon, or tonight? I guess it's night. No? Don't be shy. Okay, well, if you are out there, thank you very, we thank you very much for your service. Those of you who can hear us, we thank you for your service as well. And Jeff, if, I believe there's a place for your signature and my signature on that. And then we will move down to item 5.2, next proclamation declaring January 2018 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Is, do you have that one, Pam?
That one.
Okay.
By the Board of Education of the Thompson School District, a proclamation. Our nation wrestled with the issue of slavery in a way that nearly tore us apart. Its fundamental notion in direct contradiction with our founding premise that we are all created equal. But today, in too many places around the world, including right here in Thompson School District, the injustice of modern slavery and human trafficking still tears at our social fabric. During National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we resolved to shine a light on every dark corner where human trafficking still threatens the basic rights and freedoms of others. Some of the most vulnerable populations among us are preyed upon by human traffickers. In order to rid the world of modern slavery, we must do everything in our power to combat these violations of human decency. As leaders in the global undertaking to end the exploitation of human beings for profit, we must always remember that our freedom is bound to the freedom of others. This month, let us find inspiration in America's progress towards justice, opportunity, and prosperity for all, and reaffirm our pledge to continue fighting for human rights around the world. Now, therefore, Thompson School District, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the Constitution and the laws of the United States, do hereby proclaim January 2018 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, culminating in the annual celebration of National Freedom Day on February 1st. We call upon Thompson School District citizens to recognize the vital role we must all play in ending all forms of slavery, and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities.
Thank you. And I will entertain a motion to approve that one.
So moved.
I'm sorry, did I get a motion?
So moved.
And, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. And a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to proclaim January 2018 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Wendy, if you'd call the roll.
Paul Banks?
Two ayes.
Pam Howard?
Three ayes. I'm just kidding.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Eat to the eye by theta ayes.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Okay, I think that passed unanimously with a 7-0 vote. Final one is item 5.3, proclamation declaring support for Thompson School District educators. And I believe Barb Cruz has that one.
I do. Proclamation. Whereas Thompson School District would like to take the time to recognize and celebrate the efforts of all Thompson School District educators. And whereas excellent teaching is a labor of love, and our teaching dedicated professionals often use their own resources and working evenings and weekends to enhance and enrich the daily learning experiences of their students with innovative and individualized lessons. And whereas educators fill many roles, including listener, role model, motivator, and mentor. And whereas educators spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling, and coaching students. And whereas educators continue their influence on their students long after-school days are only memories. And whereas the Thompson School District recognizes and supports all educators in educating the children of this community. Dr. Stan Shear and the Thompson School District Board of Education express our profound feeling of gratitude and also deep appreciation for all that educators contribute daily to their students, the school system, and the community. Done and proclaimed this 7th day of February 2018.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve that proclamation.
So moved.
And a second?
So moved.
It's been moved and, it's been moved and seconded to declare, to accept the proclamation declaring support for Thompson School District educators. Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Thank you. And I know there are some teachers out in the audience, so if teachers would please stand, educators would please stand, just so we can give you a round of applause. I know there's not a lot of people here today, but we really don't want to pass up the opportunity to say thank you for all you do, all the time. Thank you. All right, did I get that one back? Thank you. All right, that takes us down to discussion items. Item 6.1, Master Plan Committee Update. Dr. Crespo.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Margaret Crespo, Chief Academic Officer. I would like to take a moment and introduce, have our MPC members who are in the audience please stand. So I just want to say thank you to these amazing individuals. These are representatives of a larger constituency group that we work with on Master Plan, and I'm here tonight to give a brief update and share a brief presentation, a lot of these documents you've seen before. So we'll start with just an update around what we've been doing in Master Plan. To begin with, we have been discussing, we changed up after our last meeting, a little bit of how we were addressing our needs based on our update and pushing back the dates of reporting until a little bit further related to our charges. So I'm going to start with, some of the conversation that we've been having at MPC has included, I'll start with the memo so everyone can, oops, can see it or not. We split the group into three areas. So the large group met and had a conversation around what are the areas that we really need to focus on, and those specifically were determined to be related to a larger closure discussion, our, at the time, our deferred maintenance model, and the third area was community outreach. So one of the things that MPC had talked about for quite a while is connecting with those people in the community that have an interest in where we are with our schools, and connecting with those people who may not have a connection to our schools or an interest in our schools. So over the last, we had two meetings in between the last board meeting, and the last, the first one, we set aside group time so that people could pick the subcommittee that they would be interested in talking about, and they met in small subcommittee groups. And here's an update around what those look like. The first was we decided, we have a board policy, which is not coming up at the moment. Here we go. Here we go. So we have a board policy around capacity and school utilization, and as, if you read the memo, what we're asking for is an updated model to the school utilization ranges, essentially not changing a ton of language, just really honoring the fact that we have service-level capacity areas, and that we want to make sure that within the enrollment, we're acknowledging those. And then what we realized was, it's really great that we have this process of understanding what utilization looks like in a building, which would be the 25%, ABC levels, 25/75. But then what? What does that look like? And what happens if a building is 100% to 125% overutilized? So through that process, we had MPC begin the process of looking at some of the options for a plan. What would a plan look like if we were going to close a school, or if we had overutilization issues in a building? So I'm going to wing it, because I don't have the paper, and it's not coming up. So the first thing that we did was look at all of the area across the country, what happens when a school has to be closed? We have all of this data. We've built it internally. We know where to get it. We know how it looks. But to the community, it's not in a handbook style. It's not in a framework. People don't know where to go to get the information. So part of the process has been to develop a handbook that, here, is a short PowerPoint around what that would look like. So we would first begin with a decision-making process. Using those areas of capacity and utilization that you see in the board policy that we're looking as a first read, we developed some of these areas. What are the major challenges that we would have in closing a school? Community engagement, political realities, stakeholders, educational opportunities for children. And as we go through this, I'm not going to read all of the slides, because it really is just a condensed version of the draft handbook. That handbook, our MPC went through the entire handbook that was draft-developed. We got it from a research center that had looked over the last 20 years around the best ways to provide, to provide direction around how to close a school, and what that would look like in the future, so that families and community would always know. If your school is being underutilized, and the board policy around capacity is approved, here's the process, community. Here's the process, board, and here are the internal workings for the district. So things like, what are the decision-making processes? What would school closure look like? How would it help the financial situation? We talk a lot about seats and capacity. A lot of the board have been part of the conversation around, there's a lot of growth in the east, and there's a lot of growth in the southeast, but not in other places. So how do we build that capacity within our seats across the district? And then obviously, the financial pieces are always key. Then there's a set of criteria that has to be agreed upon through this process. So we have questions that we ask typically for a school closure conversation. These are some of those factors. These also are all included in the handbook, and Master Plan has looked at all of these. There's a budget configuration, and I believe that all of you have also seen this PowerPoint as well, so I'm going to go through it pretty quickly. The budget constraints, and the budget conditions, and what that looks like, what are those cost savings? And then the first year and then following years. And then really making sure that we look at, what are the utility savings and the facility reutilization? Because often, when we have conversations about school closures or reconfigurations, there's not really a full conversation around, and then what happens? We have all of these ideas, but not the systemic approach to see what are the best options. So that is all included in what this handbook would look like. And then, as well as the seat capacity for the district, here's an example of our capacity and enrollment across the district right now. These are numbers that we run every year, all the time. But then what? Without a policy to back that up, then you just have this report that doesn't give you the next steps. And then again, budget impacts. The other piece that is super important for our purposes on MPC is a timeline. So once the decision is made to close a school, how are we laying that out ahead of time so that the community, and the families, and the schools all know what to expect next? And that's broken up into a series of decision-making areas, evaluation, planning and preparation, and implementation. And then that timeline is public, so families can see what that looks like as they're getting ready for a reassignment, or where their kids would go to school, and that plan is all addressed with each closure. So it's not just a, in the handbook that you all receive, some pages are blank, obviously, because it's specific to the building that you might be closing or reconfiguring. And then the other pieces that are important are student placement, staff reassignment, all of those are aligned to the current contractual issues and concerns that we may have, policies that exist. Going out to the community, we often hear, what does that look like? When would you do that? How often? In this handbook, it is all written out and notified ahead of time. There'd be community forums, we would use, obviously, the same systems we use now around social media. And then, lastly, we would make sure that we always had questions available, an opportunity for a community to ask questions and add. As an example, when we were doing the MPC handbook update, there were questions that arose that allowed us to then come back to the second meeting with updates and changes that would be appropriate around school closure. So the second, so what we're asking, we're not really asking at this moment, it's a first read. We are looking to update our school closure, our school capacity board policy, which we would ask for a first read now, and then we will be bringing back to the board eventually the handbook as it's completed. So that's one section of the subcommittee work that was done during the last MPC. The second area of committee work that was done during the MPC meeting was around deferred maintenance. And during those two meetings, we looked at all of the existing scorecards, and we looked at all of the then-called deferred maintenance, and determined that even if we started right now, it would take us 100 years with no inflation to fix all of the current deferred maintenance items on the list. So, 100 years?
Based on our current budgeting.
Correct, based on our current budgeting, right. With no change, thank you. So part of that discussion led us to say, really, what are those critical areas? What are the areas that we're really, really looking at for deferred maintenance? And they're all really important, and they're all very valuable, and we need them, but we do have levels of priorities that we've developed, and revisiting those. So fortunately, through our Master Plan Committee, we, Kristin, so I'll take a second to introduce Kristin Patigi, who's been introduced before, she's the interim director, and she has been incredibly helpful with working that team of subcommittee group to come together and say, where are the priorities, and how do we price that out, and what does that look like for the future? And one of our great takeaways, I know this may not be for you, but for us, it was very exciting that we were able to rename deferred maintenance to maintenance backlog. I did it, because I couldn't remember what it was, and I was afraid I'd stand up here and go, now what was it? So, maintenance backlog, to really have the community understand that it's not just deferred, it's not like we didn't want to fix it, it's that it's backlogged, we can't fix it, because there are significant constraints financially. That committee has been working diligently, came up with a process to diagram the work of what's prioritized around that need, and they'll be coming back to revisit that as we move forward, so that the board and the community are very clear about what the next steps are. The last piece to that, as they are now, but reprioritized, I don't want to diminish the amazing work that's done on the scorecards. And then the last committee was about community outreach, because one of the pieces of feedback that we've heard over time related specifically to the recent election, as well as in general, is that the community really wants to hear, what is it? What are we talking about when we say backlog? What does HVAC system mean? What do you mean it costs $1 million to change locks? And we really have to have a very collaborative kind of discussion. So over the next couple of weeks, we have come together as MPC and talked about how do we reach that community outreach component on a regular basis, not just one or two times a year, not just when we're looking for answers. So part of that plan is, over the next couple of weeks, to visit every feeder, and the model that we're using is the middle school feeder, so we'll visit every middle school. Elementary parents are committed and kind of engaged in their middle schools, and high schools, at least they went to that middle school. So it's kind of a neutral place to visit. We'll start with our existing parents, PTAs, SAC groups, anybody who's interested, we've also talked about inviting community members that aren't connected to the school in a very personal way. We've got MPC members who have said that they will knock on doors if that's what's going to get community interested, because we are very well aware that a large percentage of our community, over 70%, don't have kids in the district, and may not have a connected interest. So through that work, we're looking to say, here's your backlog, here's what it looks like, your parking lot is falling apart, or your roof is coming down, or you haven't had an update in X, Y, or Z, we need a boiler, or whatever, septic. And we want feedback around what that looks like. Does the community prioritize the same areas that we do around safety and security first, making sure that our kids are safe and having a great learning environment, or are there other priorities? And then having some conversations about opportunities. So, does this building meet the needs that you have? Is it meeting the growth areas? And then from there, we would move out to community areas larger, that include things like community resources around our senior communities, as well as rotaries and elk clubs, and all of those that exist where we can get, frankly, an audience. And that would happen over the next four weeks, and then the following group would happen after the next four weeks, which would bring us back to enough time to report back to the board what the findings are around both, all three of those areas, which would then answer the charges. Trying to stay within 10 minutes. Questions?
I had 15.
Woo!
And I forgot to set my timer, so we're all good.
Trying to make up time.
Questions for Dr. Crespo? Mark?
I noticed one little, kind of a, well, it's a logical inconsistency that was already present inside of Policy FC, I was wondering what's the best way to handle that? Is that something I could just talk to the Master Planning Committee directly with?
Is it specific about the language around the board, the asked policy, or the existing policy?
It's the existing policy, the change just made it a little more apparent, that there's a logical inconsistency there.
Okay, we can connect, MPC?
I think that's the easiest way to do it.
Great.
Cool. And then the other question that I have is, FCA-R, which I believe is a regulation, was referenced, what's the status of that document?
So it would be forthcoming, once, we need the approval for the new board policy, and then we've got the draft done, but we want to make sure that it's something that the board is interested in working on, or having us work on before we finish that.
The other four questions that I had, you addressed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Jeff?
What kind of conversations, if any, and maybe this is something for the future, are there about an existing school when we close it? What's done with the school? What is the value? Would it be a temporary closing, a permanent closing? What happens to this property?
So we, there are a variety of options, those are discussed at MPC, and certainly as we came with a plan, that plan would be present, and then we would make the determination what that looks like. We have many options, they can be reutilized, they can be sold, we can reconfigure the buildings, so there are significant, we can tear down the building and use that property for something else. So it's limitless, based on what we think is the best fit for the need of the district at the time.
Is that then, to piggyback off of the question, is that part of that timeline?
Yes.
That you showed, it's too small.
It is.
Actually, read the letters, but is that part of that timeline, that then there would be a plan for what to do with the building?
Yes, there's a reutilization plan included, and it was also in the PowerPoint, that you break down, like, why do you need the reutilization used in this way? Are you looking for a financial benefit, whether it's using it as a rental, or using it as a sale, or configuring the building? Do you need that property for another building? So you're going to take down two buildings and put a brand-new building where that is? Those are all considerations as you're going through that planning and implementation phase, and then through the reutilization, that reutilization crosses over both of those areas. You're welcome.
And then you referenced the workbook, do we get to see that?
So it's actually not part of board approval, certainly you would see it, but it's not part of the policy approval. And actually, there was a draft of it, I think, in the emails, and I'll go back and look.
Okay.
In the emails that went out, it would have said TSD draft, across, it's about 30 pages long, we might have missed the cutoff, because we're working on it, and so MPC saw it.
It wasn't in board docs?
Right, it's not in there.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I'm sure everybody else would love to see it, so if you could just...
And as we're going, the PowerPoint will help you know what the chapters are, because it's a multiple-chapter book. And the goal would be that, first, we would start with the closure discussion, because that's very present right now, and then the next would be, what happens if it's overutilized? What are those steps? What happens if we're reutilizing a building in a different way? What does that look like? So that, and then the last piece, so thank you for asking the question, because the last piece is, we, because we're so behind in our backlog over time, we've lost, and we've heard this a lot, in technology and facilities, in learning services, we've lost kind of that life cycle of a lot of our equipment and a lot of our buildings. How do we recapture that, so that, yes, we don't have it right now, but as a community moves forward, we know, we replaced this boiler in 2018, we're going to need to replace it again in 2028, or 2030, or whatever that looks like, so that the community can be well-informed. We have all of that documentation, how do we get it out publicly, so the community can be well-informed about what that cycle looks like over the next 50 years? It's easier to plan an expenditure when you kind of know that it's coming, and it's easier to win an election, frankly, if you know what is coming.
And so just to clarify for the public, too, because we were talking about the 100-year number, so the district annually allocates approximately $750,000 for deferred maintenance, aka maintenance backlog. And so our needs are so great, that's, when we say it would take 100 years, that's if we spent the $750,000 per year, correct?
Right, as an example, right now, we're having some conversations around Thompson Valley High School, their board, so all of their sound system, lighting, is ancient, frankly, like, you can't even replace the pieces, and if, and we're starting to notice some of that fail, and the cost of replacing that to the level that it would need to be is, well, over $300,000.
Just for that one.
Just for that one piece. So when you have $700,000, and that's not on the deferred backlog, that's just, we know it was going to fail.
It's happening, definitely.
This is not a question, please, this is a question for the board, a discussion item. Let's take a step back and understand where we are. We have, we have a budget that will have to be cut by about $3 million, starting in the school year 2019, 2020. That budget may include extra money for maintenance, to accelerate that 100-year replacement, or it may not, because we might say, we're going to just take a risk of let our physical plan deteriorate, but not cut any more educational opportunities, we have to make some choices of priorities. In addition, as we know, we have increased population, as said, in the northeast and the southwest of the district. What is the schedule the board should require or request, that we actually have in front of us a proposed budget for the year 2019, 2020? I'm suggesting, as Gordon develops the budget for the year 2018, 2019, and makes presentations to us, he ought to simultaneously make presentations of what the 2019, 2020 budget would look like, showing us the district's staff's recommended cuts. And we all would see it and compare one to the other. My ultimate goal is that the board would reach a consensus of opinion of what those cuts are by June of this year. And then for all of next year, the community will be aware, and we could present to the community the hardships, well, the cuts that we have to make to live within our means. I think that's a reasonable approach, because it's such a serious issue, and I like the idea that we have this done almost a year in advance, so we could share it with the community and have feedback, et cetera.
So you're basically talking about a two-year budget?
Not a two-year budget, but...
Well, a plan, a plan for two years' worth of budgets.
Yes.
Okay.
So we could see the cuts coming and understand it. It may include closings of schools, it may include cutting of curriculums, it may include restriction of buses, whatever the district recommends, but there's no way we could go from spending $3, $3.5 million more than we have income, revenue.
To zero in one step.
And, right, we have to get to it, we have to get to our job.
Can we hold that thought?
Sure.
And when we have Gordon up for item, the item, next item, actually, and two items, and then we'll see what his opinion is on feasibility, and something like that, okay, so hold that thought. Anything else specifically on Master Plan's report or their schedule? If I heard you right, you're getting ready to go out and do these, not really public forum, but school feeder forum-type things, like now? Did I hear that right?
Yes, our intention would be to start the calendar, we've kind of already started a calendar of, we'd meet with principals tomorrow, and then start planning in the next couple of weeks, going to those feeders. So by the end, I'm sorry, so by the first week in March, before spring break, we'd be done with at least those feeders, if not a little bit further along. It's a tight timeline and schedule, but we know what we really want to hear, just around is the feedback. We don't, there's not much to say, other than what do you want?
Is it in board policy that if the workbook and the policy says a school should close, does it still, does that still require board approval?
Right, so the...
Because you mentioned that they were to close, but it really, it's a recommendation to the...
Right, it's a calendar of events, and then a, yes.
Thank you for that answer, thank you.
All right, we good? Okay. I just want to say thank you to the Master Plan Committee and the staff that supports them, because you guys are working...
A lot of work.
Really, really hard and long hours to get this done, and so thanks for everything.
Thank you.
And you seem to have come a long way from last time we talked, so that's good, that's encouraging. I like what I've seen so far, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 6.2, which is the bond mill levy override discussion. And the reason that this, that this appears on the agenda is, some of you may or may not know, the board started having a monthly study session, once a month, on the third Thursday of the month, we now have those, and we had our first one January 18. And as we were having a fairly open discussion about, you know, what we're concerned about, what we're looking for going forward, the question of, you know, are we going to talk about potentially going out for a bond or mill levy override came up. And so we thought that this would be the time to at least start that conversation, we've already heard a call from it, from a member of the public tonight. Certainly, I've been asked, you guys probably have been asked the same question, you know, out in the public, from teachers, or parents, or community members, are you guys going to do this? So we thought we would just kind of bring it up as a, it's on our horizon, why would we want to do it? When would we want to do it? And what's kind of the timeline? And I don't know, Dr. Shear, if you can kind of refresh us, like, what the rough, you know, because I've had people say, well, you guys are already too late, you need to hurry up and do this, if you're going to, so where are we? Based on what we did in 2016, we can probably refresh our memories where the timeline is...
The timelines typically, if you were interested, and of course, MPC is working through a lot of things right now.
Right.
They're going to come back with some more information regarding outstanding maintenance, but also possibly some new construction, they're not done yet. And that'll happen within the next two months. In the meantime, with the board's permission, they want to go out and talk to the community about some of these needs right now, and really hit that hard, and then come back to that. As far as timeline, I'd like to get back to the board with something solid by April, and from there, having a general conversation here, so we can get that out, and then in May, we would go to a survey. And in that survey, this time around, I would like to sit down with the board and help, and have the board very help, very carefully craft the questions in terms of tolerance, what will this community tolerate, what seems to be the interest in a variety of issues that you will have seen by that time? That's all being talked about at the board level, but also being certainly communicated out there. And run that survey in May, 1st of June, have them come back to you with their ideas about that. I will tell you, last time, when we ran the survey, the mill levy had a 70% support rate, almost, almost, it was like 68%. Mill levy was high, the bond issue was low, and a lot of that was because of some of the issues that were involved, that were, quite honestly, created some really interesting dynamics with the community about, I don't like that, but I like this. So we've learned some lessons from that, so I think the conversation with the board regarding that whole business of tolerance, I think, could be very important. And then have the survey folks put that out in May, early June, get the results. The board sits down after that and looks at the information, and whether the community really is interested in something like this or not, and you should be able to get a pretty good feel for that. We don't write the questions for this until August, so we have time to do that, and then have it, the ballot language ready. And I believe, Gordon, I'm looking at you now, because we worked this last time, I think that, it's the end of August, 1st of September, we have to have the ballot language to be submitted.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Shear, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. You're right, that is the statutory timing, there's statutory, I'm sorry, statutory requirements on when, how far in advance of the November ballot, the questions have to be called by the board, is the official term, when the ballot is called by the board. It's, I want to say, I'm speaking from memory here, it's 45 days prior to the election, or something like that, that puts it approximately end of August, or beginning of September, you can back that date up. I mean, essentially, a question could be called right now by the board, if they so desired. One important consideration for that is the Fair Campaign Practices Act. Once the question is called by the board officially, the board agrees that, yes, a question is going to be on the ballot, here is the ballot language that we want to use. At that point, district staff and administration cannot do...
At that point, district staff and administration cannot do any level of campaigning for nor against the bond issue or MLO issue. We have to remain silent. The staff has to remain silent during work hours. Certainly, on staff's own time, there's, they're free to make choices as any other citizen would in the community, but there are certain Fair Campaign Practices Act guidelines that have to be followed once the ballot question is called.
So back to your point and the question you ask, I would say that the critical points are, by April, 1st of May, the board has at least some parameters in terms of what you're looking at and what you would like to see, whether it's a bond issue, mill levy, or both. And then from there, in late May or early June, put together that survey, have it ready to go, and get it out there, hire a firm to do it, and you can do that, you're not into campaign yet, you're just letting people know what you're thinking, get the results of that. In this particular case, come back no later than August, but I would suggest, given the fact there's going to be some changes going on this summer, that you might want to think about some things in July this time in terms of consideration. And take a good look at that information and decide whether or not you feel that you should go forward with ballot language, and that can be put together by bond counsel, and have it ready for late August, 1st of September, if that's what you want to do this year. But you have a timeline that, actually, we can, if we know that's what you want to do, we'll put those things formally in front of you here within the next month, so you can see them in writing. Okay? But we, there is, there is time to do those kinds of things if the board chooses to go that, down that road.
Board questions? Comments? Great. I just wanted to, you know, get it out there that, that's something, excuse me, that, you know, what the process is for considering, considering, like, we're at the considering, are we going to consider phase, right?
That's right.
By no means is this any kind of done deal, or really, this is the first discussion we've had about it. But I just wanted to get it out there, because I know people have asked me, and, you know, are we thinking about it? Yes, Paul?
I just want to come in, because this is an issue that's very important to me, that, you know, I think our community, we have an obligation to our children, and the health of this community overall. And it's hard for me to imagine anybody doesn't look at these issues seriously, go into the classrooms, talk to teachers, see the condition of our building, see our curriculum. I mean, if anybody looks at that seriously, I don't know how they could deny the need that we have to have for that. And it's almost, it's heartbreaking, almost unconscionable to me that we would continue to turn our backs on the kids and the employees, and not do everything we could, and to continue to ask, and continue to promote, and do everything we can to get the message out there, and just realizing that the state's not going to be there. You know, with the way the funding mechanism works right now, it falls on the shoulders of our community. And I know when I was going to school, and I was a kid and I wasn't working yet, there were adults in our community that said, hey, this is important, and they took care of me, and they took care of my school, and they took care of the people that were teaching me. And as a community, it's time for us to do that for our kids. So this is just, to me, really, really important. I'm one of the ones that thinks we are already a little bit behind, so the sooner we can get the information. Thank you, Dr. Crespo, and the master plan committee, get out there, because I think it's very important that we listen very closely to our community, probably listen more than we speak this time, because whatever we missed the last time, we can't miss it again. So thank you for getting out there and reaching out to them, but I'm anxious to get out with this as soon as we can.
Anybody else? Mark?
I have to echo what Dr. Banks said, and, you know, having children in this district, and having a wife that teaches, you know, I have a pretty good perspective on where we're at. And our schools need our help, and we have an obligation. I was lucky, you know, in the 80s, I was in school. And when you look at the funding that we got back then, adjusting for inflation, I got a fabulous education. And our children deserve no less. And when I see, what I would do is I would encourage the people in the community to go to your schools, to go and sit in on a class, talk to those students. We have unbelievable kids in this district, they deserve so much. Talk to the teachers and ask them, you know, what are you missing, what do you need? I think you'll be surprised, you know, but at the same time, when you hear $72 million in deferred maintenance, that's gone up. And, you know, again, every year, less money going into the district to meet our actual expenses. You know, you, until you actually dig in, get into those schools, talk to the tech team, talk to the teachers, talk to the students, you know, you got to see it firsthand to really understand what's going on here.
All right, thank you. Item 6.3, 2018, 2019 budget calendar and development, Gordon. I'd like to point out that you're not last on this agenda tonight.
Duly noted, Madam President, thank you. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Shear, again, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. Madam President, if I could provide one clarifying comment to the last agenda item, when I mentioned the Fair Campaign Practices Act, staff and administration is able to answer factual questions. It's not that we have to remain silent during the, after the ballot question is called. We can answer any factual question that arises or provide factual presentations. We just cannot campaign for nor against any ballot issue that's on the ballot. So I just thank you for letting me make that clarification. Thank you also for the opportunity to come before the board, as I will be very frequently between now and June, with everybody's favorite topic, which is the annual budgeting process. The intent of tonight's presentation, which is brief, is to give the board just an overview of the process that is underway right now, that we go through every year, to arrive at a budget that's presented to the board for final consideration for adoption prior to the start of the next fiscal year, which is by June 30th. So we'll talk about the timeline, the calendar, the tasks that are taking place right now, and will take place over the next couple of months, and what the board's involvement will be, and what the board's information that's provided to them will look like. First, just the budget development process. This is a typical process that we, that every district in the state goes through each year. This is, I'll say tailored to Thompson, but it's a very similar process that every district goes through. As I talk with my counterparts around the state, it's a very common process here, so it lays out the timeline of what the key items look like. So in January, in red, item number one, the education, understanding, and history, that's really of the past year and the current year that we're in. So the 17, 18 school year that we're in right now, we're looking at the funded pupil count that we have versus what was budgeted, the PPR or per pupil revenue from the state that has been granted. There's supplemental budgets from the state that are being done right now, that dictate any change to that PPR rate. There's the spending year-to-date for categories, and how that compares to the budget. All that consideration being taken into account, that really started in December rather than January, but continued over the course of January, to give us a baseline, if you will, for what the coming budget might look like. In February and March, steps that are being taken is enrollment projections. That's a very critical part of our budgeting process, because that's what the largest portion of our budget revenue is dependent on, from the number of funded pupils that we have in the district, times the PPR per pupil revenue rate that the state assigns to that. That's, again, a critical piece of the process that is dependent not only on our forecasts, but really what the legislative actions at the Capitol during the legislative session that's in place, in session right now, will determine. So the governor, each year in November, provides a preliminary budget, what he thinks a budget for the coming state year would look like, which for the school district, in our case, we're looking at the 2018, 19 budget year. That's the calendar that we'd be looking at. So there's a governor's proposed budget. There is then a revision in December typically, after the December economic data is delivered to the state, for what the governor usually revises, what his preliminary budget was, either in late December or early January. The legislative session begins in January and runs through May. With education funding, the state budget, education funding is the largest component of the state budget, so it certainly gets a lot of attention at the Capitol with the legislators. There are certain legislative, or I'm sorry, statutory requirements and limitations that they have from a Tabor perspective, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, that dictate how much growth there can be in the PPR rate. So the revenue that's going to the districts, the assessed valuation in local communities across the state, because if the board will recall, a key component of the state funding is the, there's two key components, there is the state share, and there is the local share. Local share is based on local property taxes, both residential and non-residential, for property that's within the school, each school district's boundaries. That's a very important number for the school district, each school district to know what their local share is, but it's equally as important, or more so, for the state. The state does not look at each individual district separately, they look at the state as a whole from an assessed valuation standpoint. And the reason the assessed valuation is so important, I'll give you a quick example for the 2017, 18 year that we're in right now. The state adopted a budget last year at the end of the legislative session, last May of 2017, that we're operating under for 2017, 18. The state made certain assumptions in that, of what the local share, the assessed valuation across the state and the local communities would be, knowing that the state would have to backfill the remaining amount of the total program funding. Those assessed valuations come out in, there's a preliminary one that's done in August, and then a final one that's done in November, which is what's used to set the mill levy rates that the board adopts, that then we certify to the counties in December. So all these things, August, November, and December, are well after the legislative session that's taken place and closed the previous May. So there's an estimation that the state makes on what the local share, local contribution is going to be across the state for education funding. That number this year for 17, 18, now we have final numbers from the counties for that. Across the state, that is about $100 million higher than what the state anticipated. The local share is $100 million higher than what the state anticipated. That's a very important consideration, because the state now, the Joint Budget Committee and the state legislature, has the ability to say, we've got a windfall, if you will, of $100 million that we don't have to pay, that's now being paid in the local communities because of the assessed valuations in those. What should we do with that $100 million? That's the question the Joint Budget Committee, or JBC, and the legislature will be asking themselves. One option for that is for the JBC to say, great, we know we have a negative factor, or the budget stabilization factor, which is a little over $800 million, we could buy that down by $100 million. That's unfortunately not what the Joint Budget Committee has decided to do with that surplus for the 17, 18 year at this point. They still have the ability to do that, but at this point, they have not. One proposal of the, at the Joint Budget Committee, when they met last week or two weeks ago, was to return that full $100 million to the state general fund to be allocated how they see fit, how the legislature sees fit. That was defeated as well in the Joint Budget Committee. So while they haven't, they've elected not to buy down the negative factor this year by that $100 million figure, they still have that ability, but it's now that $100 million is in the state education fund, rather than going back to the general fund. And that, I don't want to get too technical in governmental accounting or fund accounting, but that's good because, for education, because at least it keeps it in the state education fund, rather than putting it in the state general fund for distribution at a variety of different things. Just as a precursor to the 18, 19 year, the governor's original proposed budget called for a $70 million buy-down of the negative factor, the budget stabilization factor, which would be a significant amount to reduce the negative factor buy, which therefore would increase the PPR funding for each district. In the revised budget that the governor issued in late December or January, after the economic forecast in December came in stronger than what was anticipated, the governor's proposed budget increased that to $100 million buy-down for next year. So in theory, the state legislature could say, there's $100 million more that we have in 17, 18. We anticipate having $100 million more in 18, 19. We could use all of that $200 million to buy down the negative factor. As an accountant by nature, I'm conservative. I don't like saying, yep, we've got $200 million buy-down across the state of the negative factor. So I don't think that will be the case, but I think there is room for some positive movement for reduction of the budget stabilization factor next year. But that is dependent on what the state legislature does during this legislative session. So, sorry for that divergence on the facts, but, yes.
Jeff has a question.
What would that mean to us at Thompson School District in terms of dollars?
I haven't looked at specifically what that would be, and it depends on what the state sets the PPR number for, for 2018, 19. But an update that I just got today says there is a $12 million buy-down that they're going to do of the negative factor this year. That's about, the $12 million buy-down is about $8 per funded pupil. So, in PPR, so an $8 increase for $12 million. So if we have nine times that amount, it could be $72 in PPR, increase in PPR at $100 million, or $140, $145, $150 million, perhaps at $200 million.
That's a 1% increase, $72.
Right. Yep, from where we are right now, we're about $7,300 PPR for this year, so approximately a 1% increase.
And $12 would be one, two tenths of 1%.
Right.
I could do arithmetic. See that? I'm with the school.
It could certainly be significant, should the legislature decide to do that, but there are a lot of competing priorities out there for those dollars as well, is a way I will say it, as Dr. Shear appreciates the competing priorities answer.
Well, I think, though, it should be mentioned, if I can, if we're talking about 1,600 students in Thompson right now.
Thousand.
16,000, excuse me. And if we were to get $100 per student, that would be 1.6 million. We're facing a $3.5 million deficit. So it's significant, but it doesn't, I don't want anybody to go away with the idea, we're eliminating the deficit or anything like that. We're eliminating a third of the deficit, and if they increase para contributions, half of that deficit reduction is going to go to para. So it's not, it's great we get something extra, but it's not going to solve our problems.
It is not the silver bullet, no. There, it would help, but it's not the silver bullet. And PERA being one of those competing priorities that will come before the state legislature this year on proposed changes that para would like to see to the retirement fund or retirement account for public employees. That's not a, it's just a proposal from para, it's their recommendation, but again, the state legislature has to act on that, so there's no guarantees that that will or will not happen this year. Item three there is update of recurring costs, and that's both FTE and non-FTE, and for those that don't know, FTE is full-time equivalent, so that's the staff salaries plus benefits are the big items there. FTE costs make up about 85% of the district's general fund budget, and non-FTE, which is everything else, makes up about 15% of the district's annual budget. So there's analysis of those recurring costs being, taking place right now. What was spent last year, did we beat budget in that particular category last year? What were the items that we bought last year, purchased last year, that we won't need this year? What are priorities that are in the district right now, as we start looking at requests for the coming year? This is a critical area, when, there's always asks out there, that every department, every budget manager has in the process. And which, with each one of those asks, comes a very specific story. We have this... We have this ask for X because of Y. It's very conscious, it's not, you know, it'd be nice to have an extra $300,000 in the IT budget this year. Certainly, that's not the discussion that takes place, although Dr. Kuhn would say, yes, we would like that. There is thoughtful consideration that goes into each of those requests, because we know we have limited means of being able to address those needs, but it is a very thoughtful process with stories associated with each one of those requests that we as a senior staff analyze, discuss, debate, argue, compromise, a variety of discussions that take place with what we think our recommendation would be. As Mr. Levy said earlier, what is our recommendation for a potential reductions for a two, three, four-year budget, a three or four-year budget plan? We do the same thing with these. This is not to say that the board does not have any consideration in that process, because absolutely you do. The board is ultimately who determines the budget, who adopts the budget, based on recommendations from staff, but also based on feedback from the board. So it's very, as we compile those lists, that's what we're in the process of doing right now, is one of the steps is compiling all of those. Are there new positions that we are being, that are being requested? Are there positions that aren't needed perhaps, that we can be removed from the budget that was in place last year? Are there expenditures that took place from a non-FTE basis last year that we don't need this year? Are there new things this year that could replace some of those one-time asks from last year? So a very thoughtful process by all involved in arriving at that list, and we'll see as we get on to the next slide or two, what the board's participation is in that decision-making process, and the feedback that we will solicit from the board to say, this is important to us, this is, yeah, it'd be nice to have that, but we would rather have this. Those discussions will certainly be brought to the board for their consideration and their feedback, to send staff away to then implement those or build those into the budget before providing a final or a preliminary draft of the budget to the board for consideration. That was item four, the proposed new budget to request items. Number five, the prioritization of those, just as I talked about, there's a prioritization that we as budget managers, we as staff of the district do as a preliminary standpoint, and then bring that, the full disclosure, the board will be able to see what all of those requests are. We can provide whatever level of detail the board might want to see without getting bogged down in the details hopefully, but certainly whatever the board wants to see. This is what was proposed or asked for. This is what we have done the first pass on prioritization. Board, what consideration would you give to any of these items? So that will absolutely be part of the budget process as we move forward. A draft of the general fund budget to the board in April for your consideration, feedback, comments. May, the Board of Education feedback, obviously, again, we'll do community forums, we'll go out to the community and have presentations. Typically, we conduct two budget presentations a year, one in Berthoud, one in Loveland, to give the community an opportunity to understand what the, what some of the legal requirements are of the budget, what the considerations have been, the items that are included, what didn't make the cut this year from a preliminary standpoint. And then in June, a public hearing and hopefully board adoption of the proposed budget. A lot of these items are statutory. You can see in the board memo that's attached, some of the Colorado revised statute stipulations that are in place on the timing of these things. In general, the budget for the next fiscal year has to be adopted before the close of the current fiscal year, so that's by June 30th for the board's consideration. There has to be a preliminary budget or a draft budget presented to the board within 30 days of the close of the current fiscal year, so that's by the end of May. You'll see as we move on to the next slide what some of those tasks are and what the tentative topics for the board, for the budget presentations to the board over the next three or four months will be by each meeting. And certainly, we can expand these, contract if necessary. Really, this is a process, my intent with these updates to the board is to provide as much information as is requested and to let you know exactly where we are in the budgeting process. So it certainly is an iterative process that builds on itself. Each step leads to the next step, leads to the next step, so it is a very structured approach that we found to work very well in the past, and that's what is proposed going forward. So looking through the dates there of the future board meetings, those are the types of items that are anticipated for information to be presented to the board during these So that's through April, and then we see the rest of the calendar, and you can see the statutes quoted there, what the Colorado revised statutes are dealing with the legal requirements that we have to do. So again, in closing, as an overview of the budget process, a lot of work that has started in December is underway right now, a very thoughtful process, very data-driven. It's not, I would like X number of dollars, it's I would like X number of dollars because, and here's the story that goes with that. And when I say story, I mean that in a very sincere, important, serious tone. Here's the story that goes with this budget request. I think we need.
You're saying the rationale.
The rationale, exactly, is here's the reason we have to have that. So an example could be, and I would certainly let Dr. Crespo from an academic standpoint say, provide more guidance, but if the district as a whole, the leadership and with the board's input as well, says that we've had a literacy focus over the last two years, and we have data-driven information, meaning the test scores in math may not be quite where we want them, there could be additional resources that we say, we want to move our math scores up, and certainly we'd like to move all our scores up, but with limited resources being competed for. It could be our math scores didn't increase at the level we thought they should or decreased, and we want to put a renewed focus on that. We are proposing to increase the funding for some kind of math initiative, just as an example. That's not a conversation that's been had, but that's just an example of the type of considerations and conversations that are taking place right now and will take place over the next month or two.
General questions before we tackle Mr. Levy's question?
I'm just curious, and I think I may have heard part of the answer in there, but, you know, as a board, if we're keeping a pulse on the community, keeping track of how we're succeeding in the district, what our struggles are, I mean, we're coming into this process as an informed board, how early in that process is it appropriate and helpful that you know what our thinking is before going through all this work, prioritizing coming, then, you know, it's already May and we're a month out, then you're just now hearing where we're at?
I agree. I think May is too late. So if we look at the calendar here for upcoming board meetings, I would look at that, the March 7th meeting, the details, the descriptions that you see there, review of the 1718 expenditures, where we're tracking year-to-date, in summary and in detail if necessary, updated recurring costs that we've built in that we know are going to be recurring, that are really typical, that we know we're going to have to have, the list of the 1819 requests that are not yet prioritized, that's the overall list that I've mentioned of the asks that there could be from the senior staff budget managers, and that would be with board input at that point. Certainly, there would be information presented to the board at the March 7th meeting to say, here's some of the things we're considering, which of these are a priority to the board that we can build into the budget. It's not too late at that point by any stretch to build those in. And then very important is the last item there, the update on current state funding decisions or discussions. Typically, and we as CFOs or budget managers within the school districts across the state don't like this, but it's just a fact of the matter. Typically, approving the budget is one of the last things that the legislature does towards the end of May. That's too late for us. We have to make some educated assumptions along the way based on what that PPR funding or the funding from the state is going to be. So we are making assumptions along the way there with feedback. Certainly, we're all talking amongst ourselves, we have updates from the Legislative Council, we have updates from a variety of different groups to a couple of different groups that I meet with of budget managers, CFO types that are listening to that feedback. This is what it sounds like they're going to do. It looks like there could be a little more money for education. No, it doesn't look like there's going to be as much. We have to adjust that PPR number. We have a starting point right now with the governor's proposed budget. That's the best information we have available right now. What I will be doing over the next couple of weeks is taking that and saying, that's a, that may be, and I would use the 70 million buydown of the negative factor that he proposed originally, not the 100 million, but I would do three or four different scenarios. Proposed right now is 70 million buydown of the negative factor, and that's what that looks like, our PPR looks like X. If it goes to 100 million buydown, that looks like Y. If we have a $50 million buydown or a $25 million buydown of the budget stabilization, that's scenario Z. So we have, from a budgeting standpoint, I can say, it looks like we would have this much, here's how the big ticket items or the main categories are falling out in that budget. If things go to the better, great, we have an option to say, okay, we have more dollars available. If they go the other way, we say we have less dollars available, which will certainly affect funding decisions, decisions that the board, that staff recommends that the board adopts or mandates that we build into the budget to reduce those costs if we don't have enough revenue to cover the items that are anticipated.
So we don't have very many meetings. We talk now on March 7th, so I just would consider us, whatever, at a study session or next meeting, whatever, whatever thinking we have, as much as it is or as little as, get that out in front of them so they have that to work with.
Our next study session will be the 15th of, I was going to say November, what month are we in? 15th of February. So that would be, good timing there, I would think, to do some of that. Dave?
Gordon, it's my understanding of Tabor, that if a revenue source increases, that doesn't allow the state to spend more money. So if the property values increased and the mills produced more money, the state says, I can't increase education spending without decreasing someplace else, because the total amount of money must be consistent with Tabor. Am I correct?
In building the budget for the coming year, yes, but in the 1718 year that we're operating in right now, the state has allocated a certain amount for education funding. And if now, all of a sudden, there is 100 million more in this budget year that the legislature adopted last May that is available in the state budget, it's already been appropriated in the state budget.
It's just one time.
For the current year, that $100 million is available for a variety of purposes. They could buy down the budget stabilization factor, they could keep it in the state education fund, which is what they've elected to do. It could be returned to the general fund for distribution to a variety of other areas.
It doesn't have to be returned to the taxpayers. I thought it would have to be returned to the taxpayers.
No, because it's not over the original appropriation that was approved last May. It's just a windfall, it's not additional revenue, it's just less expenditure that the state has at that point, but they've already appropriated that full amount.
I agree. Thank you.
So, you heard the little discussion that we started two items ago about possibly looking at two years' worth of.
Budget planning.
Yeah, buying down, and to buy down our BS factor, our.
Budget stabilization.
Thank you. That, that, yes.
BS works as well.
But to buy down the, what's the word I'm looking for? The deficit.
Nega.
The budget deficit.
Our Thompson-specific.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Is that a possibility? Is that something we could do? How could we do that? What would it look like from your end?
Absolutely, we can do that, and I think it's prudent to do that, just as Mr. Levy suggested, to have at least a three-year plan for the 1819, 1920, 2021 school years, knowing that there's assumptions that are in that, because we won't know even the PPR for the 1819 year until May to get that finalized. So there's absolutely assumptions that will be made in that. I would also recommend that that be at a high level, not, there's a lot of work that goes into compiling the complete budget down to the line item detail. I would not propose that for a three-year plan. It is much more a high level. Here's how many students we think we're going to have from a funded pupil count perspective. Here's how much we think in revenue we're going to have. Here's what our salaries are this year, our FTE, and I would do it probably like that. Here's revenue in total, and it's based on funded pupil count and PPR. Here's the assumptions that are made. Here is what our current FTE costs are. We can anticipate a, the salary schedule, as we typically do that, which is the steps and columns, and then that percentage is applied also to the classified staff and the APT staff, is typically from 2.5 to 2.8%, somewhere in there is what it's been averaging over the last three years during my tenure here. So if we build in a 2.75% steps and columns increase, here's what our salaries or here's what our FTE costs would look like, knowing that that includes assumptions made on what's going to be done with para, what insurance rates will be, there's significant assumptions in that. And then same with non-FTE costs, which is about 15% of our budget. Typically, we apply a 3% inflationary figure to that. The latest CPI, which is Consumer Price Index, roughly the inflation factor for the Denver, Boulder, Greeley metro area, is how it's rated, is slightly above 3%. It's about 3.2%, so we could see that inching up, but typically, we've used a 3% factor. So we can apply that to our current costs, extrapolating that out over the next two or three or four years as well. So that's the approach that I would recommend from a high-level budget perspective, but it would show what anticipated shortfalls might be. And then further to Mr. Levy's point is, what recommended reductions would there be to solve that issue? That would require more conversation with staff, senior staff, to propose what those changes might look like.
I'd like to add, there's one more element to it, and that is, we are witnessing quite a large amount of building in certain sections of our community. And thinking of what I know best, the Southwest, they, I think the budget for a couple of years out has got to assume some sort of increased population, and a couple of our schools may become overcrowded. And this might cause us to have to spend a certain amount of money to address that, whether it's bringing in modules or changing boundaries, and if you change boundaries, you might have to increase the amount of busing expense. So I would just ask that the issue of what it looks like a couple of years from now, what we have to cut to balance our budget, we might have an extra expense too, and that has to be included in it, as best as the MPC could forecast the future. Because it would be terrible to say, here's what we got to cut, and then we all of a sudden, all those houses being built produce students that say, we need to now have another class, and we have to do something about it.
And those go hand-in-hand, those additional expenditures for, at this point, if we had overpopulation in a school and we had to add modulators, that would be the, really the only economically viable option absent a bond initiative to build addition, add in addition onto a school. Our budget cannot sustain the capital construction at that level.
Of course, but there would be some modification, whether it's extra busing to move them to be a kitchen or something, you know.
Correct.
Whatever we got to do.
But that would also be offset at some level with anticipated increased student count, which would provide an additional revenue source.
Of course, of course. So I just say it has to be comprehensive.
Yes.
Dr. Shear, oh.
The other reason why I think the three-year budget planning is important is because we're talking a lot about what we have to cut. If in fact, we begin to have a conversation about what we want to do in terms of increasing revenue locally, you're going to want to build that in to the scenarios so that people can see the advantage that you have if in fact, you have, let's say, 11 or 12 million mill levy override that's specific to certain things that you want to talk about in terms of increased support for the students. So I certainly agree with the three-year plan. I think it's a good idea for a lot of reasons. I also remind myself, as well as the board, that budget planning is really pretty simple and concept. It's about revenue and expense. And in a school district's budget, somewhere around 86% of the budget is already tied up in people. And by the time you pull the fixed costs out, inflation costs out, which is another 4% or 5%, now we're down to about 9% of a budget that you get to play around with in terms of object codes. terms of object codes. And so how those object codes go up and down against that, certainly important, because, and then of course, the other fact that it's always there every year that, that we have to deal with is increased salaries, which is the, the most significant impact on, on a, a general fund budget, which comes out of negotiations and all of that. So in some ways, you know, kind of chuck into those, I'm, I'm just trying to give you the 80,000-foot overview, and then we can talk about getting down to the specifics, but I, I think that this revenue picture, especially if we decide to do something locally, and that was made, I think Dr. Banks made the comment, that, that it's going to have to come from the local, local sources, is where that, that margin's going to be for that, that 14, 15, 16% kind of thing that, that we're looking forward to having, so. But I, I think we can put those assumptions together, I think, you know, in California, it was required by law to have a three-year budget. Now, by the time I got to the third year, I'll be honest with you, it was a real wag, but still, it gave us parameters to look at and, and encourage certain things to, to go on. So, yes, it can be done, I think it's a great idea, and, but I think, I also think it's because we certainly are going to have some very interesting conversations over the next four months about what we do with that revenue, or lack of revenue.
Down here. Paul, and then Mark.
I was just going to jump in real quick, and this may be for our next meeting's discussion, but has there been a discussion, pros or cons, and I don't know which way I'd fall, but are we assuming that we just need to wait till the 19, 20 school year and take the huge hit all at once, or is it part of the discussion for this year, saying, you know, maybe we do some this first year, absorb the hit, adjust? I mean, I don't, I don't know what the answer to that is, but...
Either do I, I think we should see what the data shows, and, and address it at that time. Because one thing we would hope, I would think we would hope to do, is do it all by attrition, not lay anybody off, but do it all by attrition. So we might have to do some attrition, you know, accept some attrition in the 18, 19 year, to be ready for the 19, 20 year. But I think that will come out of the wash, I think that's a very good point, and I think we have to just look at it.
Yeah. So, one thing that I'm very familiar with in our kind of planning when we're doing, you know, business-type strategic development scenarios, that's the word that I heard, and I wanted to underscore that. So the idea that I'm seeing is, you know, based on what the MPC comes back with, priorities from the community, it'd be valuable to have a couple of different scenarios, saying, you know, if the community agrees that this isn't really a, that this is a priority we can live without, then this is what the budget would look like without, you know, with that expense taken out. And so, just keeping that idea open, two or three scenarios is possible. I know it's a lot of work, but again, I think that 80,000-foot view, and keeping things simple, and saying, this is what that would look like in a rough way, I think that's got a lot of value to it.
And noting what the assumptions are with each one of those scenarios is critical as well, so there's no confusion of, you said this, but now we're not at that. So it's, here's the assumptions that go into this scenario one, here's the five to eight to 12 key assumptions that are in there. Scenario three, which is best case perhaps, here's the eight or 10 or 12 key assumptions that go into that. And in all likelihood, as Dr. Shear said, when you get out to that third year, this is a snapshot in time, and the third year could be totally different than what is estimated right now. But that third year will get updated in the second year too, which now becomes the second year of the three-year plan rather than the third year, so that's a rolling, rolling process as well.
Excellent.
The other, the other issue that I would ask the board to consider, you know, what's your, what's your thinking, each one of you, in terms of, how large should the reserve be? Because you still have, you still have a significant, relatively speaking, because I've been in school districts where the reserves were not near this healthy. So you have to decide, you have to decide, what's that target for you too, as we work on our budget, and, you know, Dr. Banks has brought up the question of what the, what the board would like to see, that's, that would be another one of those assumptions we need to know in terms of, where's your comfort level in terms of reserves?
If I could, I've been thinking about that, and my first reaction is to maintain the reserve as is, because we are not going to be able to do very much more maintenance. And if all of a sudden, we have to replace a $500,000 roof, or something like that comes up, we best have that reserve. We are playing roulette with maintenance. And if you think you're going to have to take 100 years to replace all the roofs and stuff like that, you're going to have roofs fall down. And so we're not going to do that. So we have a choice of, of either reducing education further to make monies available for maintenance, or keep it in a reserve. Either way, you got to do something. So just, just a thought to, to be considered.
Mr. Levy, we only have 2.5 billion square feet of roof.
Yeah, that's all, that's all. And does it snow here? Does the sun shine strong? High, high UV?
Okay, thank you, Gordon. Next item on the agenda is item 6.4, Exceptional Student Services ESS Overview, and Charlie Carter and Margaret Crespo. And I believe, Board, we have a print packet, a print copy of the PowerPoint as well.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. Dr. Shear, I would like to present Charlie Carter. She will be presenting the information that was requested by the Board related to the Student Services Update, Exceptional Student Services Update.
Good evening, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about special education. I included the vision statement because we are frequently asked, what is the vision for ESS in the Thompson School District? And really, what I wanted to show was, it is not very different than the vision statement for the district, because the Thompson School District is inclusive of all children. So, in our district, we do not have two separate systems, we have general education, and special education is a support to general education. So similarly, the mission is not different. We want to empower students, we want to challenge students, and we want to inspire students in the least restrictive environment possible. And so, our inclusive practices philosophy is that we want all of our students with disabilities to be able to access the general ed curriculum and typically developing peers to the greatest extent possible, while achieving educational benefit. So similar to the mission of the IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is our guiding federal law, is we are ensuring that our children with disabilities have available them, to them, a free, appropriate public education that's designed to meet their unique needs, and prepare them for further education, employment, and independent living, which is aligned with your goal for community, college, career readiness. So one of our obligations as an administrative unit is to fulfill our child find obligation, and that means that it's our responsibility to find those students suspected of having disabilities in our community. And those are children from birth to 21 years of age. And so, that's a, a pretty big territory to cover, and a, a pretty big task to accomplish. The way we do that is communicating out in various ways, working very closely with pediatricians, hospitals, dentists, counselors, private preschools, getting out into the community and educating them that this is a service that we provide, and we will evaluate the students, and if they're eligible for services, then we will provide them the services. There are 14 disability categories, we really focus on 13 of them, because one is infant to toddler, and so we're really looking at that preschool and then school age group of students. Then we are looking at how to provide services for those students who are eligible under any of those categories. We're required to provide a continuum of services. That means we start out with supplemental aids or services in the general ed classroom, and then increasingly provide greater levels of service. And so the, the ideal is to have students be as close to the general ed curriculum and typically developing peers as possible. So, how are we doing at all of that? So the state, every state is reviewed by the federal government with certain standards, and then all of the districts in the states are as well. So in Colorado, we have met their requirement, the, the top requirement, a MEETS requirement, which means that we have met their standard of performance. And then, all of the district's data represents the state's level of performance that is determined by the federal government. So we talked about that. Okay. So, we're doing okay, we met requirements, but there's always room for improvement. And so our target areas that we, we really need to prioritize and work on are graduation rates, our LRE placement, which means, are those students receiving their education in the least restrictive environment possible? Looking at assessment for math and reading, and both participation and performance, and looking at our post-school outcomes. We collect data and follow up on our students after they leave public school to see whether or not they are enrolled in a college program. Are they enrolled in a vocational program? Are they competitively employed? And I can say that nationally, that data is, is not positive. We have a lot of students with disabilities in, in our district, in our region, in Colorado, across the nation, who are not engaged in meaningful employment or some type of programming. We do have the updated data for 2017. I'm unable to share it because it hasn't been submitted to the federal government yet. So this slide gives you an idea of the comparison between our December count and our October count. So the October count is, are all of the students, the December count are the special education students, and then it shows the percentage of identified students. So whereas our overall enrollment has remained relatively the same, you can see that the percentage, the identification rate has increased over time. And I would say that our updated data follows similar trends. So in our district, this is the breakdown of how students are, fall, in terms of the number of students within disability categories. You can see that specific learning disability is the highest, and that's pretty typical across the state and across the nation. Speech or language impairment is also pretty typical, that's usually the, the second highest one. Other health impaired is a disability category that is rising rapidly. And then we have some low incidence disabilities, where we don't have a lot of children, but those are the ones that typically have very significant challenges, and need a lot of We are very proud of our outstanding teachers in ESS. We have about 222 licensed staff and 213 classified staff. One of our challenges continues to be our unfilled positions. At this point in time, this is the breakdown of unfilled positions, and we've tried to, to be very creative in, in how we market ourselves and advertise in order to, to fill those positions, draw people to the Thompson District. Unfortunately, it is a national and state trend that fewer people are going into special education, and so we are competing heavily for those individuals in the field. They've looked at, for example, Teacher of the Visually Impaired. The CDE has looked at our current teachers across the state, calculated out when they will be retiring, and realized that we are moving towards a crisis situation, because there will not be enough teachers to take their place. Professional development, it's still a bit of a challenge to get access to our staff in order to provide them with PD. I, I think we're on a, on a, an improving trend, but we always appreciate the opportunity to be able to have access to them, to provide varied professional development. So, and using our continuous improvement model, we're always looking at, how can we make things better? And so, what we need to do in ESS is to have a, a shift in our system from reactive to proactive. We need to move from management to innovation. We need to create capacity in both general education and special education, maximize our resources, build infrastructure, and maintain compliance while improving student outcomes. So, in order to do that, we're looking at expanding a co-teaching model, always embracing high expectations for our students, expanding the understanding and use of universal design for learning, conducting ongoing program evaluations, again, using our continuous improvement model. And just in general, competency-based education and personalized learning are extremely beneficial for the needs of our students. They fit like a hand in a glove. There's a lot on these slides, the reason why I wanted to show them to you was because this captures the growth that we have made in our programs over years. So if you look at 2005, the little, the little letters underneath the names of the schools represents the programming, so LC is Learning Center, ILC would be Intensive Learning Center, ALC would be Affective Learning Center. So that's where we were in 2005. We've made some changes in five years, so this is 2010. You can see that we've increased our programming. And as we've increased programming, some of it has, we've been able to do in a budget-neutral way, and then the rest of it has been supported by the district. So this is 2016, and you can see it's getting much more complex. We've been able to add four coordinators to cover the four feeder systems, and to provide support to buildings in a much quicker way than they'd been able to in the past. You can also see that programming has increased in many of the buildings. And so this is where we are today, it looks a little bit different, but basically continues to show that we are increasing the programming that we have available to students. And this is for a few reasons. One, to accommodate the growth, because we do have a growing number of students in special education. Although it doesn't require us to do so, the IDEA encourages us to create programming so that students are able to attend their neighborhood schools, should their family choose. But also, what we're trying to do is differentiate the instructional support that we are providing to students with deference to their disability category, meaning understanding what the impact of that... of that disability is, separate from how other disabilities impact other students, and really provide instruction with knowledge based on the impact of that disability for those So, this is what I just talked about. We really don't want to have a one-size-fits-all support, programming where if we have students with specific learning disabilities, they're getting the same type of instruction as a student with a traumatic brain injury. So, necessity truly is the mother of invention, and so, as we know that there are scarce resources, we really try very hard to create opportunities with mutual benefit. So, we have created, we have MOUs with Summit Stone, our mental health agency, to support mental health needs. We work with DHS to address a variety of needs that are shared among us. We have partnerships with higher education, including UNC and CSU, and ongoing relationships with CDE. The idea is, is they have something to offer us, we have something to offer them, and the kids benefit. So, Medicaid is one of those areas where we really needed to maximize. And so, we looked at what we were receiving in reimbursement and thought we can do way better than this. And so, we provided training to staff, we set expectations for staff that they would be participating, we set expectations for their participation in the Random Moment Time Study, which is a methodology for determining reimbursement. We have improved the documentation of our services, including in IEPs. So, if you look at this and compare 2015-16 to 2016-17, you can see that our outstanding staff did a great job in increasing the services that they're providing for students that benefit the students but are also reimbursable to us. And what these represent is the time that they spent, and it's coded, and each of those codes represents some service that they provided for that student. If you look at this slide, you can see that in 2010 and 2011, we weren't receiving a whole lot of reimbursement. We increased it a little bit the next year, and around 2012-2013, the light bulb went on about ways that we might be able to capitalize on this a little bit better. And so, we were very strategic in how we approached this. And if you look at the increase from 12-13 at 108%, that is about where we started intensively doing professional development training with the staff around this. And that really shows you the power of what training can do. We have increased steadily each year. And so, we have a number of people who are funded out of Medicaid. We were able to create positions. And actually, what that does is it creates a domino effect, because if I have health-related staff in the general fund, I can move them to Medicaid funding, and then that opens up the general funding so that we can put other staff there. The, I'll go back to that to say, the one concern I have, this is all great, and we'll take advantage as long as we can, but my concern is, is that Medicaid may not always be the same. Okay. We've also been working on improving community engagement. We have started a special education advisory committee, and anybody interested could contact my secretary at this number. We have the A Team, Autism Team, with a contact number there. B Team is new, that is the Behavior Team. So, anybody interested in that has a contact. We have ESS information nights where we provide our audience with information. We are going to have a scintillating conversation about Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. That night has not been determined yet, but stay tuned. And then, I will shamelessly talk a little bit about St. Baldry's, which is not an ESS event. This is a community event. It's a shared event with the community, but for a great cause. If anybody is interested in that, that will be held on March 3rd. And I do know some people who have participated in the past who might be interested. And then, I had, briefly, I had a couple of questions that I needed to also answer. Wanted to go back. We've had some schools who have had some needs, need to improve, and so, we've been working with them. One of our charter schools has come a long way. They've worked very hard. We are still working with them. I meet with the executive director every couple of weeks to do some problem solving and to make sure that things are staying on track. That's going pretty well. We also had a few schools that were identified through ESS, and we have plans for those schools as well to support them. And then, as part of our requirement, our compliance requirements, we are required to do ongoing program evaluations. So, we have a cycle in which we are doing program evaluations all of the time. Currently, we are evaluating our Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, and that, I suspect, will probably take a year to complete. We have had some changes in our population. We do see some trends happening, particularly around behavior. If you've been out in the buildings, I'm sure you've seen this. And, you know, we're always concerned about making sure that we're protecting the rights of every child. And sometimes, that gets a bit tricky. That's always our goal. And so, you know, in the past, there have been incidents where students with disabilities may have been disrupting classrooms and disrupting the learning of others. But increasingly, we have students in the general education population who are now interrupting the learning of others. So, we can't assume when that's happening that that is happening by a student with a disability. And so, there are things that we are doing to address the needs of all students in that area. We've increased our social workers in the district, and that means that we have increased ability to have home visits and increasing family engagement. They are also doing peace circles, promoting restorative justice. Through Medicaid funding, we have created a Behavior TOSA position, and that person originally was going to be working strictly with special education students, but the need is there. And in learning services, what's happening is, is we look at the resources we have and where the needs are, and we really work together to make sure that the students' needs are met. We do have a board-certified behavior analysts. We have problem-solving teams in the schools. We used to provide CPI, or restraint training for special education, but have expanded that to include general education as well. We have safety plans and really approach this as a team. Work together at the district level, and then also work together district-to-school level. So, are there any questions that I could answer?
Thank you, Charlie. That was very informative, and I see there are a couple of questions, so we'll start down here.
Thank you for your presentation. One question I have is going back to this, the graph, and you had mentioned that the percentage has changed over time, specifically looking at 1981 to 2016. It looks like it's almost doubled. I was curious, what are the factors involved in that doubling?
This is what you're looking at.
And also, to make sure that I understand, that the percentage at the end, I think, is 12.88%. Is that right? And so, to put that in perspective, that's like one out of every kid, more than one out of every 10 of our students.
Yes. We have, our identifi, our identification rate is higher than our surrounding school districts. It's something that we're looking at. We, that's part of our program evaluation. I don't know, which year were you talking about?
I was looking at it just general trend, the whole thing, 81 to 2016. So, you know, there's a lot of time in that, that it took to double, but it did double. I was curious, what factors are involved in that? Like, better identification techniques, or?
I think that that's part of it. I think that we, we know more and we identify more. Another factor is that at times, they change the eligibility criteria. For example, right now, the CDE is changing the eligibility criteria for students to be identified with a visual impairment. And the way that they're creating it, they're expanding it so that more students will qualify. So, there are changes in the law at times. At one point, the state of Colorado had different, some different disability categories than the federal law contained, and then they decided that they wanted to align with the federal law. And so, that shifted some of our, our numbers as well. But in terms of overall identification rate, I don't have a breakdown on how many students are moving in. I can say what it feels like is, is that we're having, when students with disabilities are moving into our district, many of them have very significant needs. We do have a lot of students who are coming in already found eligible as well.
You said the percentage between our district and neighboring districts is different by how much? Give or take, kind of a general idea?
I can tell you that. Littleton is at 9.2%. This is for 16-17, not our latest data. Pooter School District, at that time, 7.6. St. Vrain, 10.6. Greeley, 9.9.
So, it's significant.
It is significant.
I was just gonna add, and I don't know if this is still accurate or not, and I know there's different theories and different beliefs on it, at least I know when I was in the district, that we actually built up a strong reputation of servicing these kids really, really well, and we almost became, you know, the district a choice for those type of students, because they didn't feel welcome in other districts, they didn't get the service they want, and we were always very accommodating and helpful at that. So, I don't know if that can explain some of this, or?
Yes, I think it does. In the summertime, it's interesting, because I'll get a lot of calls about people moving into the area, and they'll ask about the Thompson District, and I'll ask them, you know, what they know about the area. And they will specifically state that they're looking for a home in the Thompson School District, because their child has a disability, and that they've heard that the special education services are good.
I did have one other question. In your PowerPoint presentation, there was a bullet item that said, "Visual impairment including deafness." And I was a little confused by that. I was hoping you could elaborate a little bit.
Okay. So, through, with all of those categories, there is some overlap, so some children can have two areas of identification, so we can have deaf-blind.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And I believe, well, I can't tell you how many we have, because the number is too small.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm gonna go down the line, because Pam, and then I'll get to you.
Cool. It's kinda what's going on.
Could talk about this all night. It's so amazing, and thank you so much for your presentation, and thanks to the teachers I see out there in the crowd.
Yes. These are my outstanding ESS liaisons.
Yay. Thanks for being here tonight. I know it makes a really long night for you guys. Oh, it's hard to pick and choose. I guess I'll start with my concern about the school psychologist opening, psychologist, plural openings, almost four openings for our district. That has to be a pretty large percentage of total spots we have, I'm guessing. With so many mental health concerns, is there anything that you can see that, I know it's competitive, right? I know we're competing greatly, and I think Dr. Sebers might have mentioned that our pay is a little bit less than surrounding districts, just a touch. But is there anything other than pay that we can be doing or supporting you as a board? Because to me, that's, that's a huge area of concern, and I'd love to, you know, our kids need those psychologists in the schools, so.
So, one of the things that we did do, and Dr. Sebers and Dr. Crespo were great support to make this happen, is we were able to get three school psychology interns, and they have actually been doing the job of, of a school psychologist. Their assignment was what a school psychologist would have had, had they been in the district. And that has worked out really well. And so, we've started a school psychologist intern program. We are, we've posted, we're recruiting now to see if we can fill more of those. We're hoping that at least some of the interns that we have will want to stay. And so, the plan is, is to kind of grow our own and
Awesome.
Have them fall in love with our district and wanna stay.
Yeah. Let us know if there's anything we can do as a board to help. And also, I think, going back to Mark's question about the rates, you know, almost doubling since 1981, I think it's also really good to remember that, and I'm going to date myself here, but when I went to school, the federal law of educating all handicapped children hadn't passed yet. So, a lot of us up here might have gone to school really with very few kids that had disabilities of anti, any type. I mean, they were, they were kind of out of sight. They were kept home or, you know, privately educated. And that just passed in 1975, so those numbers from 1981, and that had only been going on for six years. I mean, you think about that, that's pretty amazing. So, it was so new still in 1981, and, and once again, just, I know for a fact that Thompson does have an incredible reputation for their exceptional student services, and I was kind of, I knew Pooter was lower than us. I didn't realize they were seven-point-something.
They're a little high.
Okay. But still, that's just like, you mean, we're almost, yeah, we're almost double. So, anyway, and then just really quickly, Community Connections, I've visited there a lot during the years I've been on the board, and I'm not sure if a lot of folks know about the amazing work there. I know it's just one, one program that you do, but can you be sure to keep the board posted about any opportunities to visit either Community Connections or other, you know, other programs, other events? It's, it's always great to get out there. I love their graduation, you know? It's really heartwarming. So, that's, just keep us in the loop if you can. And do they still come to the district and sell things?
Every Wednesday.
Wednesdays, what time?
Um, between 10 and 12.
Okay. I have to put that in my calendar and stop by. Do they, they set up shop anywhere, or do they just kinda wander?
Both upstairs and downstairs, usually. Occasionally, they're, they're in only one location, but for the most part, somebody's upstairs and somebody's down.
All right. Gotta stop by.
They have their employer appreciation breakfast. That comes up in the spring, right? All this stuff happens in the spring, and I think we all get invited. I know I get invited every year, so I'd encourage those of you that have never been out there. The employers that employ some of the students in a, are recognized for employing the students, and the students are there, and they bake the breakfast and they serve, and it's... and the students are there, and they bake the breakfast and they serve, and it's a nice opportunity to get to know them a little bit, and for them to recognize the employers in the community that help employ the kids.
And Community Connections keeps the kids with us till they're age 21. Does that hurt our graduation rates at all? That we have kids that aren't graduating?
Well, I don't know.
Yes.
It, yeah.
Well, and I just think that's important to point out because if Pooter has 8% of exceptional students and we have 12%, I mean, that's, I do think there's probably some statistical relevance there that is hurting our, not hurting our graduation, affecting.
Affecting.
I'll use that word, affecting our graduation rate.
That's wrong.
So, the word of the night. Okay, thanks.
Jeff, did you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, and then Dave.
Ms. Carter, and to your staff, first of all, wonderful presentation, but when I do go to the schools and attend the more severely handicapped classes, it's just heartwarming how the faculty interacts with them. Thank you so much, just everybody, thank you, just wonderful.
Thank you. I am gonna call a five-minute, sorry, Dr. Crespo, but I need five minutes, so, literally, guys, five minutes and we'll be back. Okay. Four minutes. Let's resume, please. Next up on the agenda is item 6.5, 2017 graduation and dropout rate report. Dr. Crespo.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Shear, the first item is the graduation update, the, yes, graduation update. I'm okay today. So, this is the memo that was provided. I'm here to answer any questions related to the data. Here's an example, district versus state, and where we're headed. One of our, one of our great celebrations is on the bottom of the screen there. Thompson School District is continuing to close graduation rate gaps within student groups. So, according to the board goals and our objectives, we were focused on students with disabilities, limited English proficient, and economically disadvantaged, and you can see from the chart below that we have shown success in those areas. And obviously, the most exciting is the plus 17.5 for our limited English proficient. What's really important to address there is that the cohort amount impacts, obviously, the percentage of increase. So, as a comparison, our limited English proficient students, there were only four that met that cohort four-year, even though that increase is 17.5%, and it's because that four-year cohort number is so much smaller than, for example, our economically disadvantaged, is that better? Sorry, I could hear it, but I didn't know where it was coming from. From a comparison of our, let's say, our homeless students, that there are 60 of those, even though that's only a .2% within that four-year cohort date, that homeless number is significant. So, it's important to remember that based on that four-year cohort. Other than that, do I have any questions that I can answer?
When you say a four-year cohort, you mean kids that start in ninth grade and are still here in 12th grade?
Correct. So, even though our numbers-
So, if they move away or something, we lose them off our-
Correct. So, even though our numbers are accounted for, seventh through 12th grade, it's that four-year cohort incoming ninth through 12th.
Question?
It's not really a question, I just wanted to compliment Dr. Crespo on the great job going from 14 to 17 on the graduation rate from 74% to 79%, 5% rate. I mean, that's huge. Yeah, pat yourself on the back, that's great.
I was gonna ask, top two or three things you would attribute it to, but you think?
So, I would say that overall, over the last couple of years, our focus specifically on individual students and their personalization, on both the academic curricular side as well as meeting their needs. Is it perfect? No. But we also realize that oftentimes, students were coming in and counted in that ninth year, in that nine-year cohort rate, but they weren't as connected as they were to the organization, to the school, if they had come in, in that eighth-grade transition. Because you have all kinds of registration nights and all kinds of events. So, we were very, very strategic in making sure that we knew who those kids were, that their transcripts had been evaluated appropriately, and that they met with someone to make that connection. That's one. And then the other, I think, that has been really important for us, has been working, we have a lot of our buildings have those extended opportunities for learning where students have those ELO opportunities where they're meeting with specific groups of teachers. And we all know that studies show that if a student is connected to an adult in the environment in a really comprehensive way, the student ends up wanting to be where they, so they can finish. So, those typical at-risk students have somebody in the building that they've either been assigned or connected with, and there's, and the staff has done an amazing job of trying to make that connection across the board. So, I would say that overall, those are the two big factors for us in seeing that growth. Yeah, well, it's everybody. I'll just talk really loud.
Okay. Oh, okay, Mark.
I echo the congratulations, this is fantastic news, these are great numbers. One thing that struck me that I think is significant here, and I'm kinda new to the board, so I apologize, but on-time graduation, can you tell me a little bit more about that term and how it affects these numbers?
Absolutely. So, about five years ago now, the state changed the way that they were doing the graduation rate. So, it wasn't your 12th-grade group, it was the students that entered ninth grade, whatever that number was, that became your denominator. And then as you move through the system, up or down, that number stayed the same, but your graduation rate was based on that four-year completion. So, then there's a four-year graduation rate, which is the most important for the districts, and then we follow along, five-year, six-year, seven-year, eight-year, which is where the impact of what Charlie was talking about before around special education. So, I don't wanna say it doesn't matter, but the impact for us, we feel at that four-year mark, and that's where the state pulls all of the data and where those attributions occur for frameworks later on as we get our scores at the state level.
And so, I mean, we also have like continuing education programs available for excelling students and things like that?
We have concurrent enrollment programs for students. As an example, we went up, we have 26 ascent students, I think that the number was, 26 ascent students this year, which is, we see that continuing to increase. So, those are students that although they finish in their four-year graduation rate, they're not in that cohort. They then go on to ascent or full concurrent during their super senior year. The first year, that had a very negative impact on districts across the state because those are your high-performing kids in a lot of ways, and then you're getting dinged on that for that four-year rate. There's been some accommodation to that, but not as significant as it needs to be to increase that four-year rate.
So, the more of those we have, it has a little-
Great.
It's great, but it has, but it-
There's an impact.
It affects the data. I wanted to point out on the dropout rate, something that I thought was pretty impressive is the Ferguson High School had a decrease in dropout rate from 18.5% to 8.4%. So, that's pretty amazing, yeah. That's really great work there.
And we certainly attribute that to the scholars program and the connection that students make with kids that are going through the system. So, they come in, they go through scholars, they make a connection to a student that's already there, and there's kind of a group dynamic so that there's always that empowerment for kids with their peers. What we know at alternative education is that although they need a commitment and a connection to an adult, they also need their peer group to be a positive influence where they may not have been in the past.
That's great, congratulations on that one, too.
Thank you.
Anything down this way? All right, thank you. You can stay put for item, excuse me, number 6.6, which is the dress code policy, JICA.
And really, I'm just here to answer questions. We're very, we're actually very excited about how this dress code policy came up. We had, parents in our community came and asked us why we had a dress code policy that was punitive and negative in the way that it approached dress code, and that if we were trying to prepare our students for a future in their workforce or in their college or in whatever their future held for them, we needed to make sure that the language was appropriate. So, and she actually just left, but Sarah Rasmussen, the director of elementary, took this project on, rewrote the entire policy, and we provided feedback opportunities for administrators and staff, and this is the result of what that is.
Question, board? This'll come back for adoption February 14th? No, two weeks, two weeks from now, 21st. Okay, terrific. And then that brings us to 6.7, graduation guidelines policy.
Okay, so, as many of you, well, some of you remember, the state changed the grad guidelines, and at that time, we came with a preliminary plan around what the grad guidelines would look like for 2021. We knew that they were strategic, and we knew that they were moving forward with not a lot of change as we went through the process. So, at that time, the board adopted IKF with some to be determined in those areas that we knew were still a little bit gray. Those included some specificity around what our career college community pathways would look like as we were waiting for the state to develop the capstone conversation, the discussion around community service requirements, and then really what that looked like around verbiage like workforce development, college career readiness, some of those state verbiage words. What we ended up doing was through the last, actually for the last couple of years, and more significantly, the last year, we have had a lot of conversation with Thompson to Life. And through that process, when the state came back with the kind of quote-unquote "final" version of what that looked like, we went back to Thompson to Life and had conversations around what the diploma changes would have to look like and what this policy would have to change. We went, we did this during the last meeting, made some last decisions. I actually think Dr. Banks was at one of those meetings. We talked about math. So, the here requirements were the original only requirements for graduation. So, if a student came in and had, and still, this is still the way, a student meets the expectations around assessment, then they don't have the same requirements to sit through English and math and science and social studies as we've always had. They can look for other opportunities to apply their knowledge. Having said that, the hang-up was that when we followed the here requirements at the state, it required four years of math, and that is very prohibitive for a lot of students when it's specifically related to math. So, the state came back after a task force and limited that number to three. We took it to Thompson to Life to make sure that we were aligning because we don't, we wanna be aligned to other districts in the area that are doing similar work, and that's how the policy came up like this. There is one more area that we'll come back to, but we think that it will be actually an example, and it'll be based on what those honors requirements are around GPA, community quality hours, and things like that, because right now, the buildings do that specifically, and we wanna honor their work.
Jeff?
I think it'd be interesting to see a student's capstone project. Is that something a presentation could be made to the board, or are we better off going into school to see one?
Right. We actually have capstone projects that go on right now, which is one of the amazing things, as we were required to do this now as we move forward. We have both at the end of eighth grade, and some elementary schools do them as well, but eighth grade as well as high schools in our programs related to, Mm-hmm, LISA, our AP, our IB classes have to do their extended essay and showcase at middle-years program. So, there are a variety that you can pick from, our STEM program at birth that has one, and what we've done is wrapped that all together. Actually, there was a student here, two board meetings ago, the LISA student who was the gov, who went to Girl State, she won the election. That's an example of what a capstone looks like. So, absolutely, we can get those dates to you as they come up in the spring, and you certainly can see them.
Turner Middle School does, I was down there a couple of years ago and watched, you know, like a four or five, you know, little segment of kids, and they're really interesting because it's a middle school.
Right, at the middle school level, they're called POls, which are presentations of learning. While Clark has, every school has them, and it's related to like the STEM program or NYPD.
reporter had one in this, an article in this morning about a student from Mountain View. It was really interesting.
The jewelry.
The jewelry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. That was her capstone.
That's part of it. They also, they also tie in, you know, what they did in English, or what they did in history, or what they did in math, or whatever. They tie in, it's like a summary, but also their main. I think at Mountain View, they called it their, what do they call it, their best, best work or their best performance or something?
Best work.
Their best work, yeah. They highlighted that. Anybody down here?
I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations on pushing on that flexibility. As someone who only took three years of math in high school and five science classes to compensate and ended up, you know, going to College of Engineering, that was great flexibility. So, I appreciate that we have that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Board, all set? Excellent, thank you, Dr. Crespo.
Thank you.
So, we'll see those last two as action items next time.
Correct.
All right, written reports, I passed out, or I had Wendy pass out, actually, some notes from the study session in January. They're very rough notes, it's not by any means anything like minutes, but it's some notes that I transcribed, I recorded the meeting. I kinda messed up on the recording, so about the last third of the meeting, I think I had the recorder turned off or something, I'm learning how to use it, but those were the notes that I transcribed from that meeting. Our next study session meeting will be on February 15th, that's a Thursday, from 4:00 to 8:00, and I'm assuming we'll still be back in that room there. I have some, a couple of potential items for discussion that I picked up from tonight, mostly around budget, and then some carryovers from last time, but if there's anything that you folks would like to make sure we hit, let me know.
I would like just to make the hit, I don't know if we, if we already added this to the schedule, but talk about how we're going to interview our superintendent candidates and what our focus of our board should be. We could be all over the place, and I always thought it'd be good if we all discuss what we're looking for in our new superintendent, and if we could reach a consensus of that, and then focus our questions on that, our discussion with the proposed candidates. It's coming up pretty quick.
So, kind of in light of the, are you giving me a funny look?
No.
Okay. Never. Kind of, kind of in light of-
I'm just confused with the question, I can ask a better question.
Well, it's just, I might have one particular emphasis on what I'm looking for in a superintendent candidate, other board members might have different ones.
So, McPherson and Jacobson will be guiding that conversation on March 20th, when you're vetting apps, and they'll present apps, and they'll have that conversation with you in executive session.
Wonderful.
So, okay. All right, are we good there? So, that's the notes. Future agenda items, item 8.1 is audit committee nominees, and Dave addressed that in the beginning, and item 8.2 is the next steps on the bell schedule change, and I believe Dr. Sebers will have a report for us from the implementation task force, is that what you're calling it, regarding where you are? And I think we got a brief, we got a memo on it, but not a lot of, you haven't done a lot yet, I guess, so. So, next meeting, will we have that, do you think?
I'll do it now.
I really haven't come up to the podium tonight, so I felt-
Bill's left out.
So, basically, we've had several meetings, so it's a conversation of, is this gonna be moved to the work session on the 15th to discuss, or at the next board meeting on the 21st?
I don't know, what do you guys wanna do? You wanna talk about it at the work session first, on the 15th?
Seems like that would be useful.
I think that'd be- So, then you will be invited to it.
Great.
Just invited yourself to the work session.
Super lucky.
And, and I think with negotiations, too.
For, not for the work-
On the 15th.
On the 15th, you wanna talk about negotiations, too?
Yes, please.
Negotiations with the TUD.
Uh-huh.
All right, what was the first one? I already lost it. Negotiations, bell schedule. Bell schedule, yeah, I got it, thank you. All right, anything else tonight? Anything else for future agenda items? We've got enough of them here. All right. Okay, nothing else? Sweet. Thank you. Adjourned.
Thank you.